Hotel taxes may hold a workshop on Tuesday. I saw the 11th, 2022 at the Orange County Commissioners' courtroom, 123 South 6th Street, Orange, Texas at 1:00 p.m. Committee will make recommendations for distribution of funds to county commissioners and hear from any interested party wishing to comment on the excellent expenditure of hotel audit tax funds. By law, of state taxes, Orange County, but it's a hotel like to be taxed from hotels, hotels, bed, breakfast, anything in Orange County. I'm sure all that is from the hotel like if it's tax made use only for the specific tourism related purposes. This Megan you are up.
All right, well, we've got a packed house today. So we'll, uh, we'll try to keep it on task and let everybody get, have a chance to, um, comment if they'd like, um, about their application. So, um, each of you should have a sheet in front of you that's, that has their, uh, all the applicants, the requested amounts and the amounts recommended by the hot tax committee. Um, and if y'all have any questions about any of it as we go through it, I can, um, I can answer them and then, um, I figured we'd go, go through each one and if someone's here and wants to speak, we'll, we'll give them a chance to come up, um, kind of as we go. Um, so the first one that I have is, um, an application from the Orangeville Corneer Museum. Um, this is for historic preservation and maintenance of that facility. Um, and the committee has recommended $7,500 for this museum.
You have anyone from Corneer?
All right, the next one, sorry, there were any more? I don't want to rush y'all. Questions or anything? Um, the next one is for the Cowboy Church Pro Rodeo. This is their annual pro rodeo that's held, um, annually every year at the T2 Arena. Um, there's five people here. So for this event, uh, the committee's recommended $7,000, um, for this rodeo. So I know someone here has something to say, so I'm going to sit aside and let you guys have, have a second.
Good afternoon. My name is Harlan Stroffler. I'm a new kid on the block. I'm a new pastor with the Cowboy Church in Orange County. And so I just wanted to reiterate, I'm going to let Sherrell Porterfield take care of this for us, the details, but I wanted to introduce myself and, and reiterate to you the commitment that this church has to this not only the city, but the county and, and not just doing this, the rodeo the same, but growing. One of the things that I was able to bring, uh, to the church was I have some very close friends that put on the Houston Livestock Rodeo and the lady that is known as the recipient of the heart shows for the Houston Livestock, uh, rodeo that's put on every year is now, uh, attending our church and is acting as a consultant for our arena team to even help us bring this rodeo to the next rodeo to the next level. And we support that and we're excited about it. Also, and this is going to be new to my church, I wasn't going to share with this until Sunday, but my wife and I are also committed, uh, to the growth of this church and to its ministry. We live currently in Jasper, Texas. Uh, we own a restaurant there and we own a lake home there that we've had for several years. And as of Friday, the restaurant was sold and our house is going to be sold and we're moving to Orange.
So I'm the designated talker about the event itself. I'm the one, I'm Sherrell Porterfield, media team leader for Cowboy Church, and I did the, uh, application that you have there in front of you. Again, I want to say that we're here, we brought a populace to the church, from the church because we really, really wanted to demonstrate our commitment to you guys to use the funds wisely and to thank you so much. The first year we applied, uh, we asked for 5,000, you guys granted it. The second year, 7,500. We'd like to ask for you guys to reconsider really helping us out a lot because as Pastor Harland said, we're working really hard to bring our rodeo up to the next level. We have people that come in and compete from, y'all, we get these, draw these reports from, sometimes from headers from as far away as New York. And it's just amazing. It is a two-day event, so it does require a night's stay. We still, I will admit, are a little bit, you know, concrete numbers and say, okay, this is the exact number of hotel rooms. That, I think I told you guys once before when I was up here, I was like, how do you go up towards the bull riders and go, hey, we're juicing that last night? You know what I'm saying? We're working on that in terms of getting some hard numbers. But we'll tell you this, this past year, we also demonstrated our commitment. We had a host hotel, we're going to have two of them coming up for 2023. And so all of our pre-event advertising is going to most definitely encourage people to do that hotel stay and we can get some harder numbers. I'll tell you this, when I went to a host hotel this year post-event and I said, hey, you guys, what can you give me? And they just kind of go, well, you know, on Cowboy Church rodeo weekend, our lobby's full of cowboys. And I'm like, well, thanks, but I need numbers, you know? And I have to tell you that, I, I can't tell you 25, 50, whatever hotel rooms. What I can tell you is that people come, they put their trailer, they fill up their, their, um, diesel vehicle and all that kind of stuff. So just want y'all to know, we're demonstrating our commitment and we're asking you guys, if you will, please consider getting a little closer to that 18,000, we sure would appreciate it.
Eighteen thousand?
So who's the host of that? Do you have?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I think I got them both on here. Um, the Holiday Inn Express and seats and also a little Pinta. And then we have like the Holiday Inn Express was a host hotel for last year. And so they're in the rodeo program, they were in our advertising area last year as well as that you can see and some of our major sponsors like Ranger, they did that for that. Yes, ma'am.
First Presbyterian needs to ask for help. Their restoration.
I think that y'all are, and you look through kind of the stage that maybe you are, but this man right here is impressed.
He's got that voice, you know that?
I mean, moving to Orange, those people in the, he's with you all. And I think at least we should do half of the 18,000, 19,000 at least. Is anybody?
Do you have any numbers? I mean, I mean.
Yeah, the attendance, yes, yes, sir. Um, the stock contractor as well as the arena owner, they estimate our attendance at between nine and 900 and a thou and.
And that's just 200?
No, 900 for nine, yes. 900 for nine, so 18,000.
So that's just 200?
Yes, ma'am.
So y'all be just at T2?
Mm-hmm. And the reason we do it at T2, we would love to do it at our arena, at our church. We have a wonderful arena on our church property. However, um, we've been given contractors bids that like a cool million to put a top over our arena. And with a pro rodeo, if it was just a kids rodeo, that's one thing, but with a pro rodeo and the people are coming in, competing on the national circuit, they have to know that where the weather's not going to be an issue. So we, T2 has been really, really, it is. Yes, ma'am.
And if Chad likes having it, buddy.
He does, he does, and he's been a great supporter for us.
So you're making a suggestion for mine?
Yes, which is the half of that.
You have a recommendation for mine?
Yeah.
And if you can, I mean, I know it is, it is difficult to get some of the times, you know, handle a question here. Those are the numbers that we need to help support this stuff. If it is wrong, I'm going to, I want to make sure to give you the benefit of that. Uh, but it, uh, they, those cowboys know too. So, you know, they, they understand again, it's just getting, slow down long enough to do it. I think some of the events, I know they'll actually set their at the, um, sign up time or something like that so they can get some information there.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Just so you know, whenever Judge Allen finds out you're leaving, he's going to call me. And therefore, you know, we're going to bring tax dollars down here. We're okay with that.
All right. Great, everyone?
All right, so we have, uh.
Next, we have, yeah, Friends of the Orange Depot. This is, um, previous, in previous years when they've applied, it's been for historic preservation of the depot museum. Um, last year, their, um, which we were glad to see, their funds, uh, were used in a little different way to help support their, uh, depot day event, which was a, with, uh, what was it? Art in the Park and the car show. I believe all that was happening at the same day. Um, so there was a lot of synergy downtown and, um, they requested, uh, $5,000, which the committee recommended, um, for that as well.
So, third question?
I mean, the depot, to me, is a real plus for Orange, that is, the people drive past that and go, wow, that easy. And that's, anything that they're good, like Orange, look better and be better is a plus and like that.
Yep. Nope. So we'll leave that one at five.
Okay. Uh, the next one is, um, an application from the Greater Orange Area Chamber of Commerce for the Bassmaster National Tournament. Um, I think that this event speaks for itself, um, and the impact that it has in terms of, uh, national recognition, attendance, um, and just, it's great. I think we all can agree on that. Um, I know Ada and some of her team are here, if anybody would like to speak on it. Um, the committee has recommended $100,000 for that event.
Good afternoon, judges and commissioners. Uh, I have Steve Jones with me and he is vice chair of, uh, he is, uh, Mr. Everything out there. He's the festival ruler of everything, I think. So thank you, Megan, for those words. Uh, yes, we now hold the national record again with a, a little over 40,000, 40,107 to be exact, attended that event last year. And our economic impact study, which we had given a copy to y'all, uh, that we paid an outside, uh, vendor to do this for us, and we brought in $3,217,607, uh, in tax, you know, for that weekend that we did that. And that factors in, you know, those fishermen will be here fishing and we do, we have the number of hotel rooms and like some of them said, they're not the easiest things to get, but what we have done since 2013, this is our fifth thing to do with Bassmaster. And by the way, Bassmaster has come into one place in Texas this year and they are coming right here to Orange County. It, it's the only place in Texas that they will be this year and they have chosen to come to Orange County. So that's a great thing for the community and it speaks volumes about the citizens and the community. But we have always taken surveys out to every hotel in Orange County. We, and I actually get with the actual owner if I can or the general manager, tell them how important it is. The first year's, it wasn't that great, important to them, they saw the impact of it. So we go back and pick those surveys up and then we do a post thing with them. So we have some pretty solid numbers of numbers of rooms that we've turned in and there's historical data that has been given. So, um, we, that is a lot of money to give us. We want to make sure that we're being a good steward of that money and show you the return on that asset. So that's why we choose to, to do this economic impact study. We go to the links and Bassmasters requires all of their fishermen as well as all of their, uh, help me out, judge where they call, the people that send the boats.
Marshals.
Marshals, thank you, Chris. Marshals and all of their staff has to fill out those surveys as well. So, um, we try to do the best we can to do that. We go to, you know, do that. Steve, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, the whole thing, as Ms. Beaton said, this is a big deal. They're not going to Lake Fork, they're not going to Ravine, they're not going to Zuluia, they're going to Orange County. So we have to be able to put on a show because we know our fish are not as big as they are at Lake Fork. But they come here for the hospitality and the people and what we bring to the table. We bring a different thing to the table than those big fisheries do. So the fishermen have a lot more say in the, in Bassmaster now where they go and we didn't get voted out. So we have won those guys over.
And I, and I will say too, after that tournament is over, I will get emails, I will get people calling, fishermen calling and talking about the hospitality of the community. They may be at place eating, people are walking up to them and asking for their autograph and they, you know, they, they help them, they do everything. So it is the hospitality of the people in Orange County that helped that event to be a success.
Yes. Any more questions?
Any questions?
I'm here.
No. Okay.
Thank you all. The next one is, um, request from the EDC. Uh, this is a, uh, recurring request that we, um, put in, uh, for the four billboards on Interstate 10 with the big experience, Orange County, um, artwork on them. Um, those billboards are located in Rose City, Winnie, Sulfur, and, uh, right here at Simmons on the digital billboard. Um, and so the recommendation was $50,000 for the upkeep of those annual billboard contracts. And, and we discussed in previous board meetings, uh, renewing that artwork, changing it out with, you know, updating it. I think we've had that one for three or four years. Um, so that's always an option as well, but we, we do still get a lot of compliments on it. I believe that was a Lions Club, um, project that is just great.
We think all those places that you're putting them, not taking one of them away that maybe gets checked, we put, you think they're in the lot.
I, I think so. Um, and, and with these billboards, it's once you're, once you're in on that contract, if you give it up, you're put on a waitlist before you get back on it. So, um, you know, we, we do have the ability to take some away, more, whatever you guys would like to do. Um, but it's, it's, it's a waiting game to get back on those.
And we have to use them for multi-purposes.
Correct. We used them last year for, um, the COVID, COVID billboards. Um, so we are able to repurpose them. It's just the cost of changing the vinyl to replace it with whatever we need, so. Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Okay. The next one is the Heritage House Museum. Uh, again, this was one in previous years that was applied for, uh, under kind of the historic preservation umbrella. Um, they have added several events, um, to their calendar for the next year. Um, and the committee's recommended $20,000 for, for those events. Um, I know Ms. Charlotte and Lori and Kimberly are here, if anybody would like to say anything, but, um, one of them being the ghost walk that's coming up this weekend, so.
I'm Kimberly, and I'm the current secretary for the Heritage House Board, um, and I can read passages. First off, we want to thank you for the generosity of the 25,000 that the Heritage House received last year. At the Heritage House, we offer a vast collection of Orange County history, including documents and collections from community members, the Historical Society, Historic Commission, and Dr. Williams Collection. We have recently acquired an exhibition of the first mayor of Orange, George Curtis. It is a model replica of his original home and it will soon be on display at the Heritage House. After hurricanes and then the COVID delays, we are almost through with our renovation projects and now that the wallpaper is up, we are currently planning our grand reopening on December 7th with a ribbon cutting as we welcome our beloved Santa Claus visit to the Heritage House. I know that John will need to go to talk to Santa. Each year we host educational programs, meetings with the Historic Commission and Historical Society and plan to have more programs this coming year. We are open on a daily basis for anyone needing to do personal or professional research. Our six annual historic ghost walk is coming up. It's this Saturday and we have grown exponentially since we began. This year we have all five Orange County schools participating with over 100 students who are helping to bring Orange County history to life. We want to thank y'all for your contributions. We are able to help provide restorations and storage of historic items and documents, historic educational activities for the community, and you allow us to continue to grow and promote the history of Orange. And might I add, we have been closed for five years. However, in the last three years, we have been more involved with our community more than ever. We've worked more closely with other local nonprofits. We have focused on our mission statement more than we ever have and we were named nonprofit of the year, all while we were closed. So imagine with sufficient funding, what we can accomplish when we're ready. Okay. December. That's it. That's it. But we'll hopefully open a little bit for that to happen. Also, just to talk to some people today, that y'all's insurance is 6,000.
Yes, ma'am. And we give you 20, so that, all that Maggie's student's paying for your investment.
Yes, ma'am, that is true.
That's not helping your project.
Your, your.
So I think we need to relax and start to tax. We would greatly appreciate that. And you work off of the school and with history and Orange history and I think that we, all kids need that.
That is our mission.
Has happened in our world.
That is our mission statement is to provide education and preserve the history. So we're trying our best to follow our mission statement and, and these kids love being a part of the ghost walk. So we're generating excitement in young people about the history of our community and I think that's important.
Maybe something if you can come up with some, we need to do that.
Bill?
Any questions? I'm just watching our HR smile.
Don't hold it against the one on the board.
Of course, the, the, you're talking about the insurance, I'm thinking. Right, but she.
But it's still money that's going.
All right, so, and I have, I mean, I've been over there, I know they've, uh, y'all done a lot of work over there. You know, it's looking really good. And, uh, I'm glad to see that that thing's going to get back up and open because I know that, uh, a lot of people enjoy it and especially during the holiday season. All things they do with their family, kids. So I, I have a recommendation at this point, uh, from the Commissioner Beaton to increase it up to the original request of $30,000. Do you have any comments on that, concerns, thoughts? Commissioners? I'm good. Yes, yes. All right, well, we will change that recommendation to anybody to $30,000. All right?
Next one is the lecture theater for the 2022, 2023 season. Um, the committee has recommended $45,000, um, for the lecture. Um, we've got some lectures in here, if y'all have anything you want to add.
Sure.
If you'd like to, no pressure. I know Lenee left y'all stranded.
She's, she's actually in Nashville right now trying to book some shows for the next season.
Yeah, so we're her backup.
We're the backup.
We're the big team, we're the big team.
Hey, Doctor, and I'm JT Robertson. I'm new to the lecture theater, but I would like to thank you all for having me today. And this is my coworker, Chris. She is, she's our graphic designer, but she's more than that. She is our queen of hospitality, which we talked about a lot today. She helps, um, bring all the people here and want them, keep them here and have them coming back. And she helps make our reputation, um, what it has become today. So she's more than just operations. Um, we wanted to share, uh, some numbers with you guys today, um, but just to give you, um, an overview, so we, right now, we are currently preparing to start our 43rd season. Um, we're going to kick it off on October 22nd with respect. We're going to do 10 shows this season, um, all wonderful Broadway shows and two concert series. And, um, each season we bring in an average of about 30,000 people and, you know, that's our goal, one of our goals at the lecture is to bring people into downtown Orange and let them experience all that we have to offer. And so we're able to do that with, you know, our hospitality and, uh, we have volunteers here from our, um, from our guild service. And so it takes so many people to make this happen. Um, so also thank you to our guild members that are here, all of our volunteers. If you've ever been to one of our shows or if you've ever even just talked about us to anybody, we, you know, we really thank you because it, it takes it all to make it happen. Uh, but just to give you an overview of, um, other numbers, we did an economic impact study in 2019 and we learned from the company that we use that we bring in, um, on average $5.6 million annually to Orange. So that's a, that's a pretty big deal. Um, we also, um, on average during a year, we, um, fill up more than 300 hotel rooms each season. And that's, um, you know, some of our shows are overnight, but all of our, most of our performances spend the night. And so they're staying in our local hotels, um.
We work really hard with the hotels.
She does.
Keeping a great communication line open with them on our people staying there and, um, every time that they stay, I get a report from them. I work very hard to make sure that everyone's happy when they leave. So we keep pretty accurate numbers of our hotel rooms.
Welcome to the restaurant.
You know, I've been working on Jap and Tell about that, we just won't work over the rest of that meat without.
Well, that has been one of, that's one of the reasons why we feed all of the cast with
our hospitality crew. And so that, we try to make up for that because there is not restaurants and like Blue May Group that's coming in.
You have a couple of years.
We're, we're working on that, but Blue May Group coming in, you know, they're, they're won't eat on Sunday night at like 9:00 at night. I'm open to suggestions if anyone has.
If I'm to stay overnight.
Yeah, exactly. I wanted to stay in Orange, spend their money here though, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we, annually, we spend about $100,000 on marketing and so that definitely has a little impact because we're advertising with our newspapers and, um, we're also, you know, advertising to bring the people here. Um, and although, you know, we are umbrella donors for Stark Foundation and they pay to maintain our building, um, we, the Lecture Inc. is a separate nonprofit and so the seasons that we, the people that we bring in and the Broadway shows that we, um, produce, um, bring in $1.5 million and that's what it costs us annually to bring all of those shows. And then on top of our Broadway series, we also do an educational series and that's also one of our, uh, a part of our mission with the lecture. And so we have a page to stage experience for our elementary students as well as high school students. And so we bring those kids in, they come in for field trips and they come in on their buses and those kids are all around the park and, um, and a lot of these kids, it's their first time to come to Orange, their first time to cross the bridge, but it's also their first time to be a part of, um, a stage production. And so it's very exciting for them. So if you have any questions, please, please let us know.
So the recommendation is 45,000. Do we have any changes to that or did that?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on my list is the Orange Amateur Radio Club. Um, this is their annual hand fest event. Um, and they, they've, uh, they've received funds several years, my list only goes back to, um, but the committee's recommended $6,000 for that event. They're, do you have anybody here? I want to make Mr. Gettys here. Um, their expected attendance is between 400 and 600.
Is it a one day?
It's a one day event, yes. Uh, I believe, I believe it's a one day event.
So what do they use it?
I mean. They use it for advertising and, um, advertising and upgrading of emergency radio equipment, promoting amateur radio education training, and to bring together licensed radio operators to train others on operation and digital communication modes. I probably have a list of that this one.
Yeah. Uh, so the recommendation was 6,000?
Correct.
From the committee?
Correct.
Do you want to see any changes on any of that? Say 6,000?
Next one is the Mauriceville Heritage Association, their annual Crappish Festival. Um, the committee's recommended $10,000 for that event. That, that was the amount you, uh, uh, approved for last year.
Good afternoon, y'all. I really didn't come to ask for any more, I just really came to thank y'all for everything you have done for the Heritage Association in Mauriceville for the last few years, as you see on there, y'all have done quite a bit for us. That money that y'all have given the organization has freed up other money that, like last year, the Heritage Crappish Festival budget was about $160,000. And it's our biggest fundraiser of the year. It's where we raise all the money to do things that we do in the community. And everything that y'all have given us has been a great help, we appreciate it a bunch. Uh, the things that we do with that money that we raise there, like this past weekend, we went to the Orange County Livestock. The things that we do with that money that we raise there, like this past weekend, we went to the Orange County Livestock Show here for the, the youth, Orange County Livestock Association. We were able to give about three thousand dollars in add-on money to every child that had an animal there. We've given about two thousand dollars this year to something called the Backpack Program. For those of you that don't know, that's something everybody should look into in Orange County. There are a lot of kids here in our community that don't get the food they should get. And this organization through, through the Southeast Texas Food Bank, they give food to the schools basically. And on Friday, those kids get, that qualify, get to bring those backpacks home with food in them for the weekend. And all of the money that y'all have given us over the years has allowed us to be able to do things like that and rebuild the community center and the new pavilion there. Just this year alone, since we got the pavilion built, we've had two fundraisers for families that were struck by tragedies and they've raised over fifty thousand dollars for medical expenses for both families, actually. And if it wasn't for the, for the community and the county doing this, we couldn't have known what we've done. And really, that basically, that's it. I would like to thank everybody here. If you look on this list, there are a lot of good things happening in Orange County. Just like this weekend, you know, with the stuff at the pavilion, the Shriner's had a big event at the Expo Center. We had the Orange County Livestock Show, I mean, that, Orange County Livestock Association, they raised over eighty thousand dollars this weekend for the kids that were there. I'll say they're on this list too, I'm not with them, but I would like to thank them if there's anybody here. Well, that's it, thank y'all.
Ten thousand and recommendations. Is it saying that?
Okay, the next two applications are from the Votter Chamber of Commerce. It's for two separate events. The first being the Music by the Stars music event. And do y'all want to take them separately or do you want me to just talk about them together?
We can talk about them together.
So the first event on the list is Music by the Stars. The second one is the Texas Star Music Festival. These are both events that have been held, like I said, my list only goes back two years, but even years before that. The recommendation from the committee for each of those events was a thousand dollars per event. Last year and previous years, they were approved for seventy-five hundred per event. And I know that their music contract cost alone is well above that. The reason that the recommendation was so different from previous years is because there were just a few questions that we needed lined out from the committee, which I've since gotten all the answers to. So, Ms. Johnny's here.
The, uh.
She's gonna talk about the question.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll add into that a little bit because when I first saw the recommendation and I saw the difference and so I went. Megan's all sat down with her a little bit just to kind of find out what the reason for the recommendation was, why there was a difference. And I think it was confusion more than anything else around what kind of an event. So not what kind of event, but who's hosting the event. It's several years ago, the Commissioner's Court made a decision that all EDC, I mean, hot tax money events were gonna be through nonprofits. The way that the request came in, it came in, it looked like it was not a nonprofit. So I asked Megan to reach out to Chamber Commerce and Votter, have some discussions with them to make sure that it was one of their actual events and flowing through them and not the other way. So is that qualified in fact as a nonprofit?
And they did.
And that's what they based their decision on because of that.
Correct, and they did confirm, when I spoke to the Chamber President, that this is, the Chamber does indeed co-sponsor these events with the event sponsors as well as a portion of the funds raised at these events is donated back to the Chamber of Commerce for scholarships. Thank you, so.
And I think that was a little confusing, it was more on the fact that they just, it wouldn't appear, that it got phasing in, appeared that it was a nonprofit, it appeared that it was a.
Correct.
In due, so once that clarification was made, I just anticipated at some point this weekend Johnny's gonna show up.
I told her yesterday, she gave it a rundown, so.
So you and Alex moved that stuff.
It is witching season, right?
Who are y'all trying to bring into that this year?
Okay, so you want me to stand up? Donna does, she's got a doctor.
Yeah, because I don't, I have ADD and so if the flood even goes around, I'm gonna, so I have to leave. But anyway, you know, thank you as always for this consideration for the hot tax that does help us bring in name entertainers to southeast Texas. I'm Donna, I have the Oats and Votter. We have a legendary venue, it's been around since the sixties and back then in the day, you know, they house at Tracy Berg Marches tonight, George Jones, Joelle, all them. So when we got it, we renovated it and wanted to keep that legacy going. So we brought in people like Mel McCoy, John Conley, Tigran Brown, and many more. And obviously without hot tax help, we wouldn't be able to bring in that sort of entertainment. So this upcoming show is called the Swamp Pop Jam. So we've got legendary artists that are coming, Johnny Allen, Louisiana Express, TK Hewlin, Javin Jean Bousoir, Charles Mann, if I haven't already, so his name. It's gonna be a really great show, we expect to have around three hundred and fifty people, which will max out our place. And we do, whenever we mail the tickets, we send out all of the hotel information that we work with to keep them in Orange County because that's the whole goal, right? You know, so we wanna do that. So ourselves, just putting in the bands, we take ten rooms. And that's before we even have the people that attend the events. So because of the help of hot tax, we're able to keep the ticket price low, it's only twenty dollars. And without your help, like I said, we couldn't afford to keep our events at this price and thank you for your consideration.
The other event that we do is, where Tracy Berg is gonna be in March. This bill, along with thirty thousand dollars, so we have to do a lot of age due. But the hotels that I've always worked with, we always go back, we can identify everything that we have. We had people stay in the hotels all year long because we did a lot of the events. And we bring a lot of people to Orange, plus the Christmas present I started twenty years ago. So we don't get any money for that, but we do try to promote our town. What's our little one? Yeah, Tracy, yeah.
He's not volunteering?
No.
We've got Clay Walker coming to be a red marshal.
For the National League.
Yeah, he'll be here.
I heard. Probably can't get our slow injuries.
Yeah, but we do appreciate everything that y'all do for us. But as I said, we get hotel rooms and we can back everything up, which the rest of them will not hurt them again sometimes, but we're charging every time.
Currently have a recommendation for seventy-five hundred, a change from seventy-five to back to seventy-five hundred on each of those two events. With the Music by the Stars and the Texas Star Music Festival, what thoughts, turn them out?
I would like to say, please.
I apologize, I was not able to attend the committee meeting this year. I do feel like there was some confusion that underexposed our side of the county. So I am very appreciative that the Commissioner's Court is looking at recommending the seventy-five hundred again because these events are amazing. We had a lot of other events, like we gave hot tax to the Greater Orange Chamber this year, they asked for it. We've got some other events like FFA and stuff like that that did not ask for money, which I do feel that they should have, but they didn't. But our events are just as important and I appreciate y'all researching that and figuring out kind of where it went wrong. And I do apologize if I missed that meeting because that would have been clarified in there, but my husband's a donor's back and had to have back injections and stuff, so thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Oh, alright, I'll just wait for y'all's, okay? So seventy-five hundred, please. The next one, I'm gonna lump the next three together as well, they're from the same applicant. It's three applications for the Orange County Livestock Association. They have requested funds for three separate livestock show events. And the committee's recommendation for each of those was two thousand dollars. For a total of six thousand dollars to the Orange County Livestock Association.
A question, so, because I wouldn't, I don't go to community, see my kind of committee, but what was the reasoning for reduction from the previous case? Did they have a reason because it's, just been almost all these events at one point or time or another, they're all pretty good?
The only, you know, discussion really was that historically they've applied for two events and this year they applied for a third. And, and in previous years, I don't know if this is a first year event, the third one that was applied for. But there was some discussion about, well, have they ever had this event before? Does it have a strong attendance or history? And so because there were three instead of two, that was, that was the reason.
I was, I was gonna make the suggestion, we go back, thank you, I liked that idea too, is the first two, we give them the original three that we gave them last year, for the first two. And then I'm gonna stay with the two thousand on the new event. Feel like they can have some history on that one?
And like I said, I'm not sure if it is a first year event, it's just their first year in, in the last five years that they've applied, so.
I can, I'm not with them, but I can speak on that real much. The Curie History Event, the Livestock Show, that's a new one. Mr. History is a longtime resident here, you can pass him a number. That, that has been going on for many years and there are people that come from all over for that show. They have that show with communities and, this is definitely my first year.
They can give us next year, coming forward, you know, I said, I always, always want to hear, recent again, those numbers back up.
Right now, I have a recommendation for the Livestock Show, go like three thousand, see, yeah, go like two thousand, save the two thousand. Like Curie History, Livestock Show, good, good. Alright, you're gonna go to that, isn't it? Alright.
The next two, which we, we'll talk about kind of injunction. Their, uh, next two applications are from the Orange Lions Club. Their first event, or the first application on my list is for the district convention. To be honest, Chris, I don't know a lot about it. So if you want to come on up and talk about this event, the recommendation for that event was five thousand dollars.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Thank y'all for the opportunity and for the support y'all have given us over the years. This year, we have the opportunity to host a district convention for Lions Club in Texas, there's about fifteen districts. And so our district has fifty-five clubs. And so periodically, annually, each year, the district governor will set up where the district committee will be. This year, I serve as a district governor for Lions and so I request that we have it in Orange. And so it'll be over two, three days, depending on how long people stay in town. Beginning on Friday, kind of mixer, our goal is to do some tour, get Chamber Law, set up the winery, dinner, and then the event Saturday at the Expo Center. That'll be an all-day event. And then people have the opportunity, if they want to stay another night, they can, if not, they want to go home. We're anticipating at least in the ballpark of a hundred and fifty people coming into town for this event. Doesn't happen very often, I think the last time Orange County won, I was in St. Wethardburg as governor, I think it's still the Ramada Inn. It's a few years back. And so again, any, any funds that we can provide, we definitely will use and use wisely. It's just a great opportunity, one, to showcase Orange, like Orange County, and to support the business of those deals here. So we'll definitely utilize whatever we're given. There's fifty-five Lions Clubs, probably about twenty-five hundred actual members, but we're expecting about a hundred and fifty to be in attendance. Generally, you'll see from each of the clubs, their president, vice president, secretary will normally come in, just depends on policy schedules and availability.
And then the next one was also the Lions Club, this is for the proposed mural project. What was that, two years ago? A hot tax funds were approved for this same initiative for their first mural, which went up down here on the Orange Stationer Building. So yeah, the Lions Club was responsible for that mural and they're, they're wanting to do a second mural and I'm not sure the location, Chris would probably know. But recommendation for that one was five thousand dollars.
So actually, the mural project began with the experience of Orange County, that design was the first one. Being new into the art game, I didn't realize exactly how much painting the actual mural cost. So that year, we often, we got the design done, you'll see the vinyl banner at the Star Foundation, the Star Museum. They also displayed there, probably that year, it was just the design and the poster that's up. Second year was the one we did at the Orange Stationer, which was honestly, you know, so much better than we ever anticipated. And you see it, it's a main, you see it all over social media, both with people that live here and then obviously people that are visiting, it is definitely a lot of people that'll see. And so we had hoped to do one this last year, y'all approved this for another one. And just scheduling an artist and whatnot, it honestly did not pan out. And so, which Lauren Lee did an amazing job on that one. And since she's done all the oranges and this, her schedule's gotten quite full. And so we're working on looking at another artist that we can get done. This one we're looking at, at the lumber out on, a drum, lumber, thank you. They have a building that faces I-ten. And so we wanted to do something much simpler so you can see why you're going seventy-five miles an hour, but something on the back, that's how they're building there. We didn't, we didn't get to use it, no, sorry.
They were approved for seven thousand and it just didn't pan out.
Stayed with us, correct?
It stayed with us, it didn't necessarily technically carry over, that's why they had to, you know, brief.
Yeah, the one over here is right at ten thousand.
Oh, wow.
So it's, the recommendation is to go back to the first amount for twenty twenty-two, so if you, if you keep that money, right, you still carry that, carry that, it means it's seven thousand. Alright, so seven thousand is the, the recommendation.
That'd be, last one should be pretty quick. The next one is for the Volcoast Pageant Annual Events. This is an annual event held at the VFW. The committee approved, recommended, I'm sorry, eight thousand dollars for this event. Expected attendance, eight hundred and fifty people, it's a two-night, two-day event. Funds will be used for advertising, newspaper, TV, radio, out of state newspaper, out of state radio and billboard. Purpose of the event to promote occasion, music, food and heritage. Like I said, they're expecting around eight hundred and fifty people. Yeah, it's all approved now. The next one is for Southeast Texas High School Fishing Club for a high school.
Fishing?
Yeah. For fishing tournaments, high school anglers.
So if many students from high schools are just getting high school. But usually they all come together?
Southeast Texas, Southeast Texas High School Fishing, host attendance year, specifically their own waiver, we've been, this year, they, if they came in this year, about five years ago, if I remember, we gave five thousand for them. We all request they come back this year, back whenever they came. Two years ago, their average turnout was about four hundred boats, and they're up to about five eighty now, so it's a very big event, very, a lot of people. Good thing about it is it's a one-day fishing tournament, but they, that will be here the day before for registration, so it's sort of, you're on a, it ends up being two days, but it's.
But it's all things, five months for kids.
It's reviewed for five thousand on that one?
And then the last one is an application for Curie Dionyx for their second annual Juneteenth Festival to be held at the City of Orange Riverside Pavilion. Do you have any here? The dates, okay, June sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The committee recommended eight thousand for this event. Uh, funds will be used for payment of entertainment, security, sound lighting, advertising, insurance fees, tent rental and sanitation. Um, their expected attendance is five thousand people. I would have to have the post-event report in front of me, which I don't have.
Eight thousand for my year, not recommendations in the year.
Correct. What kind of surprise? Which should be.
Yeah, so they say change our regular, all of our regular lines and stuff and it's, uh, you know, it's just something about these, these events. Every single one of them is a great for Orange County. You love having here. Everybody doing all the work it takes sometime. I'm, you know, I participate. And a couple of these events as well. So I know it takes from all of you folks to put these things on. It's not easy. Uh, most of the time it's a, uh, it's the love of the paint and jazz, you know, they're gonna get you there. Uh, but it's great for our communities and we're glad we can support it. Typically are, uh, you know, just how high tax works and we can run usually around two hundred and fifty thousand a year is our income level. If that goes up and down, depending on, but they'll, they'll stay. And then, uh, we've had some good years. And so that puts three hundred and eighteen, puts a little over our, our normal take, but we have a little cushion because of the COVID. Uh, so we'll take advantage of that while we can. Uh, we have a couple of years of, you know, a little sardine in there. And so we had our money built up a little bit. So we're trying to pay a little bit more if we can, that's it. So, um, you can get comments, anything for anyone else in the audience at this point?
I'm sure one is also, you get with the cities as you're providing, it's, it's all the cities also have a hotel. If you don't have a purchase, other than that, like all that, you're all involved in it or sweat and tears.
So many kids are involved in it. The main thing is our kids, you know, something to help with. Fine, for the dog to.
We have never a comment, so I'll take it into the carry and build it. I'm pushing that whole section, I read off my favorite.
I'm freezing.
Yeah, enough speaking.
Cause I'm getting a lot of technology, uh, software that I need to use.
That was great. When she won that, it was the time of year. I can't promote.
That's the one with the video that's on your page.
Yes, she's great. Then it's like people, they don't, they don't know who she is and they're gonna wish they.
I'm talking to Eddie. Cause I, I wanted to get like an advertising package for you that when the entertainers come, because we're, we're used to radio station to go. With, it's a digital streaming thing, but what we can do is like for artists that, uh, even though like, like, it's like a B-Live music and stuff like that, I can play on the radio as well. So they get me music, they can play me on there. I can do that as well. I can do a video interview with them. I can put this out. So then I get that. See, they have something they can share on social media. You have something you can share as well. So. Cause I was thinking is when you listen to like your channel radio, Kino's podcast, just think like how to see like, you know, appreciating concerts. They can do that. I'd like to do something similar for you because like, when me, me, I had. About like fifteen years ago, I got crazy, I took a paper out. And so we did it in the morning, so it was listening to the bottom top. And so when the paper came in, we were, we did something that we had to do at the same.
So not to, I don't think on the radio, I'm one of those fans, all the time. I'm the radio.
Unless the second one, I, her, uh, she's gotten to the point where she has, where she'll just do tickets on Spanish.
That's when everybody's doing it.
But, uh, send me a message, your information, and I'll put together something that takes you to that and then we can go. Something more, uh, growing the thing because I'm.
Take care, Margaret. See you later. Showworky board.
It's weird, it's the, I've been trying to get a hold of her for like the last, like three or four months to get the quotes involved. And I'm like. You ever notice that people show up with a.
It's a good place.
She's smart. She has a cover.
I was just thinking, I wish I had a little raft. Because it's time of year, it's cold in the morning, it gets ninety degrees, it's hot in the afternoon. So I don't even think about it.
Well, this, this is the IC. Oh, yeah. How about you?
Always trying to check some kids.
Yeah, I don't say, you know, you can people.
Medium.
That's a question that you guys.
For the EC stuff.
Let's have a word. We thank you that Tracy's mom had a great time today, birthday today, and it'd be many more years. We have commissioned Trey Hand, Lord, as he owned that cruise and bringing that safety to us. And as we enter this new year, God, uh, we just ask you to give our commissioners a listen to make right decisions and our judges. So God, we just commit this meeting to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Thank you everybody for coming out. So first thing is, is we have a court session for comments, court visits and allow them to court today. Maybe before I come along, just to mention the right, each person addressing court, maybe limits to three minutes. And as always, unless it is a, uh, actual statement of something, on the agenda, we can discuss it. If not, then we can make a connection back to wherever it is discussed. So, uh, if we have anyone at this time in the audience who would just address the court. If you have a statement, name, place, residence, hit the phone and get it on recording. We'd appreciate it.
Good afternoon. I'm Dana Espona, the Director of the Small Business Development Center from Lamar State College, Arthur. And, um, I am here today to thank the court for providing me with a satellite office at the Veterans Building. Um, to use to service all of the citizens in Orange County. Um, we are finding that the location is a good location for us. It's centrally located, so I'm able to service citizens from writer, citizens from Rich City, citizens from Reeseville. In Orange. And I just wanted to, to come before you to say thank you. And also I provided with you, uh, to you, um, the flyer that we show, um, and send out to folks. Give them the address of the Veterans Building and who we are and what we do. And the staff there at the Veterans Building have been fabulous, uh, in welcoming me and helping me get settled in. And so now that we're officially open to business at the satellite office, um, feel free to mention to your citizens that you service. If you know someone that is interested in opening a business or is interested in, has a business and they'd like to grow. Um, you know, you, you have my information. You know how to get ahold of me. So reach out and we're there to help. We're there to help Orange County grow and be successful. Also in front of you, um, is our upcoming small business symposium. This year we're having it at the Bob Bauer Center in Fort Arthur. But I am now that I cover Orange County, I'm going to alternate and next year host this event in Orange County. So going to ask for your assistance in helping us grow this event. So when it comes to Orange County, people know about it. They know who, what it is, what we're doing, and it's there to help small businesses.
Thank you. Please, turn, do you have any other questions?
Yes, I have two things. First of all, I would like to thank my siblings and really all of us to the Playboy family. For the lost, uh, our constable, maybe Playboy's dad down in the street. And I'd like to say, I'd like to say happy birthday to my mom, who is her ninety-nine today. And I still look wonderful and going well.
Yes, yes, sir.
Happy birthday to you, Miss T. Mother.
All right, same here. That's, uh, that's, um, mommy going ninety-nine. So, uh, I can't even imagine what that looks like. So. She does, I think she gets around evidence. I do and most of the seniors, she's, uh, she's an amazing lady. So, uh, glad to have that. And, uh, but other than that, uh, again, we just met, I just think it's kind of about our, our different groups that you, so tell like if you tax money and stuff for doing events in Orange. And that they have to sit through that and see all the good things that's happening on county. I mean, a lot of great volunteers, a lot of people get their time and their energies to do stuff that promotes Orange and, and all of our community. And it's just great to hear that. So that was a great meeting. Glad to have that. So anyway, we'll move on to number two. Which is acknowledging, proclaiming September and October as the Gift of Life, Rest, Cancer and Early Cancer Awareness Perspective. This is a campaign established to heighten information on risk and symptoms of these diseases, or being in stroke detection and intervention. I'm just gonna speed on that. There's a lot you want to talk about it.
Good afternoon and thank you Judge and Commissioners for allowing Gift of Life to come before you and share this very important message. Um, my name is Quintella Smith and I represent Gift of Life today. Just to, um, give you some of the key points, with the exception of skin cancer, breast cancer is the most common cancer in American women. With one in eight American women developing breast cancer in her lifetime. This year nearly thirty-five hundred Texas women will succumb to face breast cancer. Ovarian cancer is the fifth most deadly cancer among American women because it is a silent disease with vague symptoms that inhibit early detection. Ovarian cancer will claim the lives of nearly one thousand Texans of, um, women this year. Gift of Life is the most preeminent cancer fighting organization of its kind in the state of Texas. Through education, awareness and early detection, Gift of Life seeks to reduce the devastation caused by cancer in our communities. Gift of Life strives to help medically underserved women in our area receive the diagnosis, the treatment and compassionate support that they need to beat cancer. Diagnosis and once again after, throughout the whole process. This year Gift of Life will host the Julie Richardson Procter Five-K River Lung Monster Dash on Saturdays, October the twenty-ninth in downtown Beaumont. And this is to raise critical funding for its breast and ovarian cancer initiatives, which impact thousands of southeast Texans here. It is a fun family event featuring an interactive five-k trip between route, castle contest, Pink and Till, Compton Peach, um, Patch Wizard of Wellness Village, entertainment and food. The community is invited to attend. Any cancer victims that we have or any time that you want to send it to, we will be able to join us at no cost at all. And they'll have fun and they. And they'll have fun and they'll get physical and they'll be able to do the run. So we hope that we'll join them, that we will join us. Um, the whole community, like I say, is invited. Scholarships are still available, the citizens can register at our online site. But we also want to let you know that, once again, it is for underserved people, but anyone who is in need of the help can get these screens. And we do monthly screens at Baptist Orange, and they are free to the public. Just in Orange alone, I want to let you know to date, one hundred and eleven clients we've received. We done a hundred and two screenings, forty diagnostic tests, three biopsies, and with two breast cancer diagnoses. So please join us, Gift of Life. Thank you so much for having us this morning. Good afternoon, and congratulations to your mom.
Oh, my gosh.
You're welcome.
I will, uh, read the plaque on the issue, and so we can vote on it as well. So it's, uh, whereas September, October, National Ovarian and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a campaign established to heighten information on the risk and symptoms of these diseases to advance early detection and intervention. And whereas ovarian cancer is known as a side disease due to its vague symptoms that make it difficult to discover until late stage, it's called a devastating prognosis. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among American women, except for skin cancer, in approximately one in eight women in U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer during her lifetime. Whereas this year it is estimated that more than three hundred and ten thousand women will be diagnosed with either breast or ovarian cancer, and nearly fifty-seven thousand will die from these diseases in the United States. And whereas it is apparent that southeast Texans are educated about breast cancer and available with free mammograms for women who cannot afford health insurance, so Gift of Life runs breast health and cancer prevention program. And whereas Gift of Life provides thousands of breast cancer, cancer screens and diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds, and biopsies with access to cancer treatments to medically underserved southeast Texas women. And whereas Gift of Life has helped extend the lives of two hundred and seventy-five women whose breast cancer was detected through its free critical services. And whereas to heighten awareness of these diseases and raise funds for vision of cancer prevention and educational outreach, Gift of Life will host the twelfth annual Julie Richardson Proctor 5K Ribbon Run, Ribbon Run, Monster Dash, in downtown Beaumont on Sa- Saturday, October the ninth. And now therefore it is all that I, John, great day, Judge in Orange County, do proclaim Tuesday, October eleventh, as Gift of Life breast and ovarian cancer awareness day in Orange County. And I also already call women in our community to prevent it, help practices and early protection efforts. I'll take a motion on that. So, three, I'm saying about two, and we're just saying. All in favor? Can you oppose? That motion passes, uh, excellent program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, uh, it's great to have those.
It's like amazing work, and it really, you know.
Like we can't see. Uh, Commissioner Rocker for.
I have a record here.
Oh, okay. Okay, and you should go in a little bit more. Okay, I went ahead, but wait, I have to take my phone, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Out of number three, Dallas group reporting in the minutes regarding payment of bills approved by the county officer as per this position.
One hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents. Road bridge, two hundred ten thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Gender control, five thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and forty-seven cents. Adult probation, three thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Airport, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Consolidated accounts, fifty-two dollars for total payment of three hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. I make the most of your paid bills.
Two, second, three, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? As item number four, discussion of possible action regarding payment of total less than twenty twenty-three bill approved by the county officer as per this position. And also, which is, uh, follows, A, twenty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-three cents from the general fund, zero, zero, one, 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 five, four, three, four, five, to U G and B for contract payment due October twenty-two, and B, two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars from the general fund, zero, zero, one, 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 five, two, nine, zero, memorial, general home for individual funeral expenses, and as listed in the spending.
From the general fund, one hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Road bridge, forty-nine thousand, ten dollars and forty-nine cents. Adult probation, five thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars and ninety cents. Airport, five hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. Consolidated accounts, thirteen thousand, eighty-one dollars and forty-eight cents, for a total payment of two hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred eight dollars and seventy cents.
Motion by three, second, by four, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? Out of number five, discussion of possible action related to receipt and acknowledging for the record the county officer's monthly financial statements. You should have a copy of that if you want to. Motion to record by four, second, by three, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? As is item six, discussion of possible action regarding line item transfer for extension service office from zero, zero, one, 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 five, three, eight, three, zero, continuous, to thirty-six thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars, to zero, zero, one, six, five, 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 three, eight, three, zero, equipment of regular five thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand, five hundred five dollars, purchase of right funds needed for new vehicle that arrived in the twenty twenty-two fiscal year. Yeah, that was the, we replaced the, uh, extension officers vehicle that they had. And we ordered the vehicle thinking it was going to show up in this year's deal, and it actually showed up in like two weeks. It was there early, so we had to pick it out of last year's.
So, but this is, was this approved from this year's budget or from last year's?
Approved in this year's budget for the expenditure that is. This was the year before the.
Okay, but we're paying for the.
So do we have to? We have to pay for it out of last year's, so that's why it was. They told us it was going to be eight to twelve weeks on these vehicles, and it showed up in two, one of them. Rest of them are all good, that one was quick. But we're glad to have, uh, we would have it were some cancellations in order. Now, the motion by four, second, by two, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? And that motion passes. Item number seven, discussion of possible action regarding line item transfer for the jail, from zero, zero, one, 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 five, three, eight, three, zero, continuous, twenty thousand dollars to zero, zero, one, seven, four, three, five, four, four, two, one, boarding prisoners, twenty thousand dollars, purpose to collect two copies of bills for prisoners through fiscal year twenty twenty-two year end. Well, same thing, just finishing out the years with, uh. Motion by two, second, by three, any further discussion?
So I'm assuming the period obviously over from last year, the contingency pension?
It's because they were services rendered in the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two year, they have to be paid within that year. We approve actual expenses to begin the actual services done.
Motion to continuously pay them?
But it was in the budget for last year, we just didn't pay them.
Right, we did not get the, the invoice for it until this year, the choice still getting the invoice. Did we get? Did we get the?
And then the money that was paid, that just fell back into the budget when the budget ended. So now we have to do a contingency pay.
We, we actually, we didn't have enough of the board because we've had more visitors and.
Yeah, void budget is enough last year. We had to move contingency coverage that for last year. Everybody good now? Motion by two, second, by three, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? All right, out of number eight, discussion of possible action regarding line item transfers for general payroll, and there's a long list, so I'm not going to. Every one of them, I'm trying to, I'm trying to read. And I'm certainly glad with anyone of y'all that wants to take that on to do that, otherwise we'll, we'll go as listed, and then I'll take them on. And then again, this is kind of same thing, it's from last year's, same as in this year's, continuously from last year, start with the cost of last year's payroll. I always have, we were short a lot of stuff in there last year, but very hot, yeah. We need more to do public math than we have really by. We want to get the eight seventy-two. Maybe smut one of my ears. All right, that's, that's what that is, so.
Well, I make the motion with you.
All right, motion by two, second, by three, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? Passes thing. Out of number nine, discussion of possible action regarding line item transfers for court reporter services from zero zero one, 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 five, four, one, zero, five, audit fees of sixty-three hundred dollars, to zero, zero, one, eight, six, five, four, four, zero, four, reporter services of sixty-three hundred dollars, purpose to pay for court reporter services through this week, year twenty-two, year end. We'll clean up stuff from last year. Oh, yeah, yeah, so we go, I'm not going to read all those either. Those y'all just want me to, y'all got all that to name, okay. All right, so just with those as listed as well, you want to read all those, all the different ones, if there's any questions? Motion by four, second, by two, any further discussion? All in favor? Can you oppose? Passes. Out of the ten, discussion of possible action declared by the staff within the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget of court position within the district clerk's office, as any two were in free disposition was originally funded through the court restricted funds made in the three following elimination of a separate part-time position. Uh, y'all remember back, we funded this, uh, we added disposition in the district clerk's office with the, uh, agreement with the district clerk that she would fund this out of her budget for the first two years, uh, as an any three. Uh, and then at the end of the three years, or the end of the two years, and we moved that into our general fund budget, we just needed a recording of that for the minutes, uh, so the treacherous roster paid correctly. And, uh, we got a record that that was what took place. So that's what this is, this is show clerification, right?
Want to clarify, Judge, it was, it was discussed, it was any two. I don't know where people were pretending any three was a question.
How did they approach something?
Quite in a minute. Minutes where there was a, when they invited on the strict funding as an any two. And I, I mean, I don't know where they pretended any three, and then it was to be, I think we were going to go back in history.
So I think the, the, um, minutes reflect that was the request for any two in the budget hearings that year. Can't remember what budget year that was, but in the letter that I wrote in twenty twenty, so it must have been the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget year, for the personnel changes of that budget year, I, I had written eliminate a part-time position, granted an any three position funded with the restricted funds for two years, review the need of this position in two years due to the TPC explosion basis that Judge Arquington had been appointed and now strove judge. And then on the, the employee that Vicki decided to put into that position, we had, we have a, um, I guess it's a letter that's signed by the judge, Vicki and Penny, that it was an any three part position to the district judge page, I mean, district clerk's office would be paid through her restricted funds. So I think it, it sounded, what I kind of remember from that is she requested any two and then after discussion, and she gave up that part-time position and she would pay it from her, it turned into an any three. She requested an any three, and then, she requested an any three, and then the part-time person was, we eliminated the part-time person, we're paying a part-time person with restricted funds, but we were also paying for an any three position with our restricted funds. We're still continuing to pay for the part-time person, but after the two years, it was supposed to turn into, we're paying the two years after the two years is up, the any three, and we revert back to, y'all paid the any three, pay.
That's how, we just need to make clarification so that we can get it correct.
She was also explicit within the budget that it was any three position.
So it's budgeted correctly, I think, in this, we're using that clarification.
Two years ago, it was explicit that was any three. Listen to the record. Okay, here. The minutes of the court, I mean, I went to the. Okay, for the workshop.
Yes. Maybe the any three is like. Four point six to twenty-one.
That's one case, sorry. For the two years, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I don't know, so, so we have, now we have another any three, not four, uh, and one part-time.
Eliminate one.
We eli- well, we eliminated the part-time, but two years ago, or several years ago, we had two any two positions that the court took away. And so we were, instead of asking for two any twos, we wanted one any three at the time.
And from two part-times to one part-time.
To one part-time. And the part-time, we're still paying.
And currently we're budgeted correctly, right? So that part-time and then an any three.
It was wedged to this, if any three was budgeted as that specific person's.
And budgeted through our normal general fund budget, not through those issued, previous coming.
They repeat, according to the identification, we have things being done. But, so now we have five any twos in your department.
Five any twos, and then that would be four any threes.
From three to four any threes.
Right.
And one part-time, right, too.
Right.
So we had an any three with a part-time.
Correct.
Yeah, it was an additional position, but with the elimination of one part-time. And that was primarily due to the TPC cases, which I mean, you think they started it last month, like, so. month or quarter, so she's the regional district judge on that.
So they have stories, but we've been.
Well, I mean, about the actual cases themselves, the work going up to.
They're filing constantly.
I think they're getting to the trial portion here coming up, but all the pre-work has been being done. Forty-five, sorry, I joke. So we see to make clarification.
Well, that's what I'm trying to. I mean, I. I mean, the minutes. No, no, it's all right. That's what we want to do.
I'm just trying to find the one going up in forty-five, fifty-six. See what it said there. I guess the discussion is whether, I mean, Commissioner, you want to discuss whether it needs to stay with any two, now that it's under our budget, or does it need to go to the any three and we can make that change now? As long as we budget it correctly, I'm good, that, that, we don't have to do a budget amendment for it. We just need to make sure that we widen from motion two. Was it any three and/or an any two, depending on. But it's currently at an any three, so if we wanna make the motion, I guess, to continue it as an any three position.
Well, I wouldn't. I mean, how would you do? I would not. I would say, yeah, yeah, yeah. Restricted funds. Right, but I mean, you're, you're paying on an any three for this time, for two years, and now you're going to help them.
No.
Now you're gonna pay them any two. I mean, no matter what happens.
Yeah.
You take your way, something will do.
It's just been paid out of restricted any three.
But it, it should have been, and I'm, I'm not, it doesn't really matter. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but it, it should have been clear, clarified that that was a position that would be used this. And I obviously haven't come in with a doubt here, it's not.
It was.
That's not the way it was presented. I'm not sure.
No, when she requested it, she requested the any three. I don't know where the any two came in, so we never even talked about it in the two. So I'm not sure where that came in.
I think it was worded as an any two as a request, but I think it went somewhere in discussion that got proofed in any word.
Her request was an any three.
It was, but any three.
I think we already have some papers.
Well, I think Christie's minutes reflect that in the email that the request in the minutes from September eighth of twenty-twenty, it says personnel request. It talks about other positions and then it says district clerk, any two positions to help handle the increases in P C cases. That was in a budget hearing.
That was a budget hearing.
Right, that was in a budget hearing.
That was only.
Right, that was what Christie sent in the email, that was the, um, request.
Do we have any new minutes from whenever we actually adopted the budget?
Well, I do the letters that show the, the personnel changes in that year's, what I read earlier, that it was an any three position that the district clerk agreed to pay it from a restricted funds minus the part-time. And then I, I thought, I had the letter that's attached to the employee that they chose to be in that position, that's signed by the judge Penny and Vicki, and in it, it says, per discussion with Judge Goffea concerning twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Orange County budget, this is acknowledgement agreement to add an additional any three part position to the district clerk's office to be paid from the district clerk's special fund, oh-one-seven district clerk record management for the budget year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Following these two budget years, this clerk position will revert to be paid from the district clerk's regular county department budget of oh-oh-one-two-two. And this is attached to that employee's payroll that he sent.
Since that period, we've been paying an any three.
Right.
And so that, that plus there, I mean, I'm not gonna back up on somebody like that. Uh, from here forward, it's what it is in the continuum of the. I think we budgeted it this year. P P C cases haven't came through yet. I mean, a lot of work goes into the case before that actually makes.
They're coming in, there's a ton of work coming in, but they're not.
Right.
They haven't hit trial.
They haven't hit the trials.
There's, there's so much more work through a case than just a trial.
How many, she told me the number, but how many cases were filed in that P P C incident?
Right now, well, approximately five, six hundred right now.
And that was the reason for you.
So my question, once these cases are cleared, will that position go away?
Well, the court's over all the number of positions in any of the parts. So at one time, I guess, it looked like there was not a need for that at that point. Hopefully, we would get clarification at that time as well, that it wasn't necessary to happen for this. Because we control everything.
Right.
It's a lot of work.
Well, I, I certainly cases aren't. Oh, I disagree. So, so I, I guess we, what we come out of this, we, we make the motion to approve that position, uh, pending the, not, we're, for that position to move forward, uh, to be agreed when cases are cleared up on the P P C cases. Does that sound fair?
No, that sounds fair because after that's cleared up, it might not be on.
Well, that would be, that's why I want to reword that motion so good.
So the motion is, is that we're going to classify this as an any three position paid out of the general fund for further review at the end of the P P C cases about the need of the position at that point. Now you want me to say that? Is that a motion by three? Second by two, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, out of number eleven, discussion possible actions declared by the staff within the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three of the assistant branch coordinator, emergency management specifically with regard to whether a position should be in whole or in part funded through or reimbursed by ARPA funds. Uh, because we hired that position, or we renewed that position last year's budget. Uh, the physician was hired, uh, twelve, just a few months ago.
On the eight.
Okay, I would say so, we finally hired the physician, was paid for out of ARPA funds for those, uh, months. This year, uh, it was, we had, uh, we did have a big budget, we're gonna go ahead and move that to be paid through regular general budget and not out of ARPA funds moving forward. And so we need clarification again for that for, kind of, credit off again to make sure that we have a quarter minutes showing what we're doing, but what we're paying for.
I think it's a position we need to hurry it up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
More, more.
Yeah. Um, so that's just it, we just need to make sure we're gonna pay for that from beginning October third, or July thirty-third, moving forward for. Hope first payroll effective of this twenty-twenty-two under budget, uh, out of general fund. We have a motion, uh, we have a motion by four.
Okay.
And second by three. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Right, out of number twelve, discussion possible action filed a hotel action tax license for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three this year. Maggie, you are up.
This is just follow-up from our, um, hearing earlier. Um, I went through and made the, um, edits of some of the changes that were made, um, as far as recommendations. Um, and so the total num, total amount of approved funds was three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three hot tax.
You want to read through those recommendations real quick?
Sure.
So if you have the record.
Right. Well, to be fair, she doesn't have the digits in front of me, so I'll, I will read them. All right, uh, so the Corneer Museum, uh, approved for seventy-five hundred. Cowboy Church Pro Rodeo, nine thousand. Friends of the Orange Depot, five thousand. Greater Ontario Chamber of Commerce for, uh, Vast Masters National Tournament, one hundred thousand dollars. Orange County E D C for, um, billboards, fifty thousand dollars. The Heritage House, thirty thousand dollars. Electric Theater, forty-five thousand. Uh, Orange Amateur Radio Club, six thousand. Mauriceville Heritage Association Annual Crawfish Festival, ten thousand. Um, Voder Chamber of Commerce Music by the Stars Event, seventy-five hundred. Voder Chamber of Commerce Texas Star Music Festival, seventy-five hundred. Orange County Livestock Association, uh, Livestock Show, three thousand. Orange County Livestock Association Sabina River Shootout, three thousand. Orange County Livestock Association Perry Hester Livestock Show, two thousand. Orange Lines Club District Convention, five thousand. Orange Lines Club Mural Project, seven thousand. The Gold Coast Cajun Annual Festival, uh, eight thousand. Southeast Texas High School Fishing, five thousand, and Cradonix Annual Juneteenth Celebration, eight thousand, for a total of three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred.
Motion? Motion by three, second by four, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Out of thirteen, discussion possible action going min three to the interval, cooperation contract for the mental health relief program in Orange County. Center, the min extends the existing agreement for one year from September first, twenty-twenty-two to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and will automatically renew in one year to replace us at the same amount as the initial term of the agreement. Possible action include all those any due, the judge fourteen, if you sign the same. Chief, anything you want to add to that, it's just an extension of that contract, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so. Motion by four, second by three, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, out of number fourteen, discussion possible action going annual operator's agreement for the jail services in Orange County and Spinal Top Center for the period starting first, twenty-twenty-two to August thirty-first, twenty-three, the services to be formed under the contract will be for mental health screening, psychiatric services, and counseling not exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the year. Possible action include all right, county directors, for the same. Chief, anything you want to add to that?
Also, we're doing the circle.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by three, a second by two, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Out of number fifteen, discussion possible action going recognizing acceptance of his office, quarterly progress report presented by Orange County Veterans Services Office.
Yeah, here. After the appointments and walk-ins from last quarter are over three hundred and seven. The number of phone calls from last quarter is one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. Um, we have well over a hundred penny claims going for compensation, non-service connected pension, D I C, uh, trying to get people into the VA healthcare system, there's a lot going on right now.
You mean like G A hospital?
VA hospital, a lot, a lot of new enrollments since the, the new healthcare plans coming home. Uh, T B C has switched, uh, programs on us from Texas, tech, um, Vetrespec to VetPro as of August, um, the twentieth. And the program itself will be dropped from, from August the thirtieth, so we no longer use that program, we're going into VetPro. The VetPro is gonna pick up our, the cost till July, so we're not gonna have to pay a new program cost for that, it's just T B C switching over its new program. And we have sent, attended two webinars from Texas Veterans Commission regarding the twenty-two, twenty-three grant applications to help veterans out with housing, transportation, marketing, uh, markers for veterans in nearby cemeteries. We have a lot of cemetery markers out there that, that are just not claimed. Uh, we're trying to get together, I'm trying to get with, together with the V F W and the American Legion, get these markers consolidated. Some are not claimed, a lot of them have to do with, it needs to be a piece of granite underneath there, or a concrete slab, I mean, there's seventy-five or dollars for the concrete and it's a hundred and thirty for the, um, to the grant. But the, uh, the family's not paying for that for the veteran. So we have a lot of markers out there that are just sitting there that need to be put on graves. And we got together with the, the V F W and American Legion, we're trying to get that settled, settled out, there's a lot of them out there, it's surprising coming out there that are not marked. And then we're trying to find the markers for some veterans that just can't find it at all.
Like that you don't know who their family is.
Who their family is and what they're doing, yeah. So we're, we're doing that, trying to get that together too. That's it. Questions, we're moving along.
March, um, before you need to pay for that service, ask your chief, do you want?
No, it's just gonna be just, yes, yes. The contract itself will, will end it for Vetrespec, and VetPro will take over. Their, VetPro is basically confident until July, and it's the same cost for it. So the VetPro is.
It's the same cost, so is that right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, out of sixteen, discussion possible action to accept and approve the eighteen T data contracts for Orange County, contracts included in all the eighteen T network integration services, the eighteen T dedicated internet device schedule, and eighteen T switch independent services with network on demand. Optional services will be versioned as a rack of options, possible action include authorizing, the county judge, judge pretend to sign the same as from you.
Um, Judge commissioners, these are the contracts for, um, all of the contracts that we will need to upgrade our network. Um, the total, uh, monthly recurring charge is nine thousand, seven hundred and two twenty-nine. That will be monthly, um, they are not charging us any installation fees. Um, it will significantly, every, every location that we have will, uh, double in, in speed, if not be more than that. Um, but, but this includes, um, all new circuits, um, all the hardware, everything that we'll need to, um, get our.
How long will that do?
That's a little bit. We don't waste time.
Well, they said as soon as they get the signed contracts, they'll get a project manager on it and, and draw the thing out. And I know, uh, we did discuss that it, we won't have to do it all at a time, like we can do a location at a time, so it'll be in stages. Um.
Do we pay it in seconds?
Yeah, I can ask, I mean, I'm not really sure. In the past, they've just, uh, I think they've charged, charged us whenever we've signed the contracts, but I'll check.
I'm sure they do. And then, and then time, like I said, it'd be a good start date and then timeframe from start to finish, you have to go to the bases, what are they, what are they going to do?
Well, I'm hoping, um, it'll be, uh, you know, within six months. We signed that one contract, um, and it was only a six-month con, I mean, it only goes through, I think, January, so I'm hoping that we'll be, uh, at least deep into it by then, and have several locations.
Yeah, because whoever's at the first age is happy. Some people act for ages, not happy because they're not getting that bad service because they're not able to, so the shorter that window could be in transition to better.
Um, also, wanted to discuss a, um, just an option, um, they are offering the first net as a cellular backup, so that would mean if, right now, the way it's, uh, gonna be set up is, like, our main location is the courthouse and I, the expo centers are secondary. So if one of those goes down, the other one, um, takes over, um, as far as the internet goes. Um, this, the first net would come in if, for some reason, there was a fiber cut and both locations went down, or we had some catastrophe where all the equipment went down or something like that. Um, then the first net would take over and be the backup until we could get backup and running on the normal network. And that is, uh, that would be a four thousand dollar one-time price and then, um, a hundred dollar, a hundred and eighty dollars a year.
You have that in your terms, like you have this new year. You see a benefit in that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good, um, that's a good idea to have a backup, I mean, we have had a few times where we've had a fiber cut, and we've been down for a couple days, and with as many people as are on web-based programs, I mean, they can pull you down, so. This would eliminate, you know, hopefully, this would mean we were up ninety nine percent of the time.
So you did have that in the, action on, what was it, sure.
Yeah, I included that in.
Actually, it's a fee action, that one, uh, again, so we could first approve the contract, uh, as is handled with the optional services, the first net, like, four thousand dollars, so it's a big amount, for the setup, and then a hundred eighty dollars a year.
Four, yes.
All right. Off.
We do.
She is the person, it's been a long while to get.
Yes, it, it has been a process to get to this point.
Motion to approve, it's by four, second by two, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, well, it, it says, what we, yeah, it just says with the option, so I guess if you're in your mouth, you want to manage your motion and say with the option, uh, first.
Okay, with the option, first.
And in your option, by your second, Commissioner Beach. Any further discussion, all in favor? Assuming this contract has that in there, because I don't see what it says upon this contract.
That, well, the contracts are.
Are in details pages.
I don't think it includes the first net stuff, it's just, this is a separate thing, so the, these contracts have to be signed regardless, and then this is just something they'll add on. Okay.
That's it, thank you. Item seventeen, discussion of possible action on resolution approved, and March County has a mitigation plan for the five-year, if they require it, not too much.
Judge commissioners, this is the, uh, the, in five years, every jurisdiction subject that has a mitigation plan, uh, which of course is where we get the funding from, uh, there's a proof, and then when it's in the plan, and disaster check.
All right, I have a motion by four, second by two. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Item number eighteen, discussion of possible action going approval for a commercial permit fee for building permits required in unincorporated areas of the county. Do you want to go again?
Uh, Judge commissioners, the, the discussion, with you all, the, uh, the, it's a fee or a schedule or a, uh, calculation to do that, we currently have a residential, which is where it started, which was one fee for everything, which was really overburdening on, on, on commercial and industry. We created the industrial one, we passed that, and then commercials still needed its own slot, so now there's three. Or will be, if you pass this, three schedules for, for that, one for residential, one for commercial, and one for, uh, industrial. To fairly make the fees across the board.
Motion by two, second by three, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, item nineteen, discussion of possible action going approving one hundred percent engineering design flood and drainage improvements in connection with the county's C B B D D R infrastructure grant on D R three three two Hurricane Harvey through the general land office contract number two zero zero six five one five zero C nine one one. Again, Joel.
Uh, Judge commissioners, this is for the, um, the, uh, infrastructure grant that we were working with for the drainage projects that were out there. We do have to see, let's see, I hear if you have any questions about, um, the man.
Thanks, Joel. Judge commissioners, this is a project, just give you a brief reintroduction, it's been a while since we've talked about it. Um, it's, uh, a correction of various roadside ditches, driveway culverts, cross culverts, uh, represents about, uh, nineteen roads throughout the county, uh, with a little over forty five miles of ditch improvements throughout the county. Uh, project budget, construction budget is about eight point nine million, um, and, uh, ready to get bids. We're looking at probably, uh, over the next, uh, with y'all's approval at this point, it, uh, we'll go begin the bidding process with the, uh, the grant, that's right, of course. Uh, and over the next two months, we'll be coming back to y'all with, with bids in hand.
Is this what, I had some people in my precinct, um, that back in March, so that you're nodding, because they said, back in March, the Corps of Engineers came out here, made the survey, and I thought, wow, I haven't heard anything like that, but it's you.
Yes, ma'am, it was our survey crews, we were all over the place, uh, for sure, uh, earlier this year.
Motion by three, second by four. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to get that going.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, I'm going to read item twenty, but we are going to move this to a different meeting, because, uh, Mr. Grignan is, uh, out of town at this time, so. Item twenty was supposed to be closed, we held the twenty six, seven, five, one, two, three, one, two, this is county attorney matters, we're on a table, we're taking no action. I'm not at this time. Which also leads us to take no action on item twenty one, because we'll be motioning back. Y'all are ahead of me, all right, and so now we will take a motion.
And you have the announcement.
I want to take a motion by four, and a second by three, adjournment commissioner's report at seven, we have enough, uh, so it's, uh, motion by four, then by three, adjourn, any in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are opposed, so the announcement was this today, this morning, we did issue a burn ban for all of Orange County. Uh, that, uh, all the other counties around us were, uh, have issued one as well, we were just kind of monitoring our stuff with, uh, Joel and our, our, our P S Ds, and and we decided this morning that, uh, it was, we don't know what was, understanding there may be some rain tomorrow, but we don't know that for sure, but we're, we're to a dry enough point that we thought we needed to do that for Texas having wildlife, so there is a burn ban in Orange County, that has been.
And that's the only, they didn't say it's not.
So that was in it, so thank you. That's it.